Six o'clock. Call the meeting to order. Ask clerk, take roll.
Vogel? Here. Sarchet?
Here.
Anderson?
Here.
Walters?
Here.
First item in the agenda is approval of the agenda. I have no additions or corrections. I would take a motion.
Motion to approve is presented.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Vogel? Yes.
Motion carries. So tonight, we have a special group of guests with us. So I'd like you guys all to help out. Welcome, members of Pub Scout Pack Eighty-Nine. Am I correct when I say that? Nice, good job by me. Arrows of Light, along with their leader, Peter England. Peter? They came to tonight's council meeting because they're here to learn about city government. So they're learning from all of you tonight as part of their Building a Better World adventure. So we do appreciate you guys coming tonight and you guys enjoy your time here. If we go quick enough, we'll have a little time for you guys to ask a couple of questions if you have any. Otherwise, feel free to raise your hand. One of these guys will call on you. Anyway, moving on. Public comments. Does anybody in the audience have anything to address council this time? Hearing none, seeing none. Moving on to item six, consent agenda. I would take the motion.
So. Second.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Walters?
Yes.
Vogel? Yes. Sarchet? Anderson?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item seven, new business under new business. Action item one, consider motion to approve application for tax abatement on the city's urban revitalization plan for I'm sorry, for One-One-Three Arts LLC for seven years at fifty percent on the improvements made to the commercial portion of the property located at One-One-Three West Broadway area.
Thank you, Mayor. According to Chapter Nine of the city code, the person that makes qualifying improvements to their property can receive a tax abatement on that which is considered the improvement or the incremental value that has been added. Qualifications are that it's in a redevelopment area. It's defined by Chapter Nine of the city code, and it does. Must increase the value. In other words, the increment has to be at least fifteen percent to qualify. This particular property went from eighty-four thousand on the commercial side to a hundred and twenty thousand, seven hundred, which is a forty-three point six nine percent increase. And they had bills that they submitted, forty-four thousand, five hundred and thirty-nine dollars, sixty-nine cents. Also must be the correct zoning and be in conformance with our zoning ordinances and our future land use. And in all cases, that is in fact the case. In front of you is the application that must be filed with the county on or before February one, two thousand and eighteen. It is asking for seven years of abatement at fifty percent on the incremental value. And that incremental value being approximately thirty-six thousand, seven hundred.
I guess I would just say that we don't do a lot of this, certainly not residentially. This scenario doesn't apply for something like this with the work that Jason and Suzanne and I don't know what does because that was sort of an neglected, to be honest, building on the square that they took. And just poured a lot of blood, sweat, and tears into it. And I think it looked great. The artistic component is lost on me. But for those that are so fine, it's a great addition. And obviously, both Suzanne and me up there with Festival Arts Council. So they've hit the ground running. Seems like
Any more?
I'd agree. It's a nice improvement to the square to see something in that building again. And been in there several times. Nice people involved in the community. Something that gives them hell.
And after that, their son's doing a lot of stuff, too.
Yes.
Noah's doing a lot of stuff. Doing a real good job. Questions, comments, motion?
Go ahead and make the motion. Do just a motion to approve the application. Don't know how we stated. But motion to approve the application for tax abatement.
Okay.
Roll call.
Vogel? Yes. Sarchet?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item two, Whitetail Ridge. Item A, consider motion to approve resolution two thousand and eighteen zero nine approving a development agreement for Whitetail Ridge, Plat One and Plat Two.
Thank you.
Kathleen, is this on you?
Uh, sure. Yes, yeah.
That's the end.
Oh, yeah. What this development agreement essentially covers is future construction of West Whitetail Parkway and Buckstown Drive. Those two lots are being platted as part of Plat One. The improvements are not yet being constructed because they are not needed to actually serve the lots that are being built, that are built within that plat. So what the development agreement does is tie the future development of those properties, which would include paving, utility extensions, also sidewalks, trails, and some parkway trees. But that would all be tied then to future development of that lot. Future phases here.
Anything to add on your end?
Yeah, I guess just for clarification. So the crating work has been completed. The storm sewer is in. So you can see storm sewer takes it. It's ready, just ready to pave for that next step. Right.
Questions for anybody or motion?
Motion to approve resolution two thousand and eighteen oh nine.
Second.
Roll call.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Vogel? Yes.
Motion carries. Item B, consider motion to approve resolution two thousand and eighteen ten approving an agreement to complete for Whitetail Ridge, Plat One and Two. Anything to add on that?
Yeah, we had a walkthrough there. There's some punch list items that are outstanding. But in order for Jared to move forward with final plat, he signed an agreement to complete with check and provided checks to cover those punch list items. So those will be completed, you know, as soon as possible in the spring.
Anything more? Good. Motion?
So moved. Second.
Roll call.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Vogel? Yes.
Motion carries. Item C, consider motion to approve resolution two thousand and eighteen eleven approving Whitetail Ridge, final plat one. I'm going to take a motion.
Second.
Roll call.
Walters?
Yes.
Vogel? Yes. Sarchet?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Motion carries. And finally, item D, consider motion to approve resolution two thousand and eighteen twelve approving Whitetail Ridge, final plat two.
I wanted to say something earlier.
Oh, you bet.
That this was moved through P and Z. P and Z looked it over as thorough as they always do. And I believe it passed unanimously. Having said that, I want to make a motion to approve resolution two thousand and eighteen twelve.
Okay.
Roll call, please.
Vogel? Yes. Sarchet?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Motion carries. What are you going to do now that you don't have to come here all the time?
I'll be back soon.
I'm sure you will. Item three, Dart determination. Do you want me to read one of these yet? Or do you want to give us a brief update on where we're at before I read item A?
This is in front of the council. Due to the fact that Dart is asking for our final determination in moving forward. The agenda packet, you should have a list of correspondence that has gone back and forth. And in the dais in front of you is the latest email that was received today. And I will reserve my other comments until we get into this item. Everything is set up here for the council to decide how they want to move forward. It's the agenda is set up in such a manner that if you do not want to exit from Dart, you have that ability.
Hey, so before I read one of these, Mr. Walters, you have anything to add?
Well, we tried.
Okay.
We went to a number of meetings. We were in front of the commission. They asked for information. Not provided to us. We asked again. It was not provided to us. They are sticking us with quite a bit of money. And I think the option is for us to continue forward. We're drawing from Dart and moving on. Paying off and done with it. I'm afraid if we stay in, we're going to be stuck with more money. We try to buy it for that current fees. And we're still going to be stuck with that money and then some.
And I think the important thing to note is that if we ever want to reenter, there will obviously be a cost incurred that goes with it. But I don't see that anytime in the foreseeable future.
I think if anything, we should be learning from this when we go into an agreement with large entity like Regional Water. Let's take our lumps. Let's not enjoy that taste in our mouth. Let's move forward and make sure that when we go into an agreement, we know exactly how to get out of it. Know what it's going to cost. We make sure that we're at the table, not a bystander.
Yeah, and I would just add that the information you're talking about includes the fact that how many trips they actually come here for. Reference to past and re-asked if they actually do come here. Because I don't know that we ever verified that they do. So that negates any other questions for the most part. And I still think we should push for figuring out what this amount should be. I know it's stated in there, but I don't think there's any question that the right decision was a year ago to leave is still probably having not done
Did we ever get formula value? We have a value. Do we have a formula that got us this number? Because the numbers didn't work. Nah, on this table.
They don't.
I can't get any, anything to work.
The only thing I can tell you is that percentage wise, the numbers are close. They get close.
And I don't think there's anything, correct me if I'm wrong, in the resolutions that we potentially would deal with tonight that is going to bind us to that number. Because we're not going to pay that out of general. So if we, that's a pass-on item, then if the numbers are different, then that'll just be based on the levy rate.
Right. There's nothing you're doing tonight that prohibits you from trying to work out something different from that.
Perfect. That's critical. Okay. So I guess, are we just going to let the red? So I, if I read the optional resolution, right, under A? Because that's a reversing, which we're clearly the general
So what you're, one D is B, the option B.
So do I need to read A? And am I can just not do anything with it?
Well, what's, what's the requirement of us to confirm our withdrawal at this point?
You, you're not obligated to confirm. If you were going to stay in, you would need to give notification to them.
So I guess what I'm saying is, you don't need a resolution at all.
Well, we do. And part of the reason we do is because they are asking for us to firm up.
You're going to, your resolution confirms that you are agreeing to pay even though it may not be the same number. It will be, this is the maximum amount you agreed to pay. And it says how you will pay it.
And they've been asking to make sure we're still heading down this path. And if there's any opportunity to change that, so this is basically one last bite at the apple across the board here. We're confirming our, we're confirming it that we're withdrawing.
Since we're not changing the direction, can we confirm it?
Basically, basically, resolution two thousand and eighteen thirteen reverses the resolution two thousand and sixteen one twelve. Option B is a simple motion that you are sticking by resolution two thousand and sixteen dash one twelve. Not a new resolution, no nothing new. It's just that we are confirming that. And then as part of the removal of Oak City from Dart, then there is the debt service that Dart is seeking to collect.
Right. And we knew about that when we made the decision. And then that's, but if there's some confusion or ambiguity on what that amount is, I would rather wait, get that firmed up. And then if they still need a redundant, in my opinion, resolution confirming what they did, I never. But even, even though I know it is not blocking us into that figure.
The only thing I'd say to that is that we did receive a letter from them that they needed a response. And we were able to, just due to the timing of when we received the letter, which was after the date of when they needed the response, we owe them an answer. And so I think at least in the form of a resolution saying that we're still moving forward, confirming our letter of withdrawal. Now, under item A, because it does have the amount, I guess, I don't know.
We can, we can delay that.
Delay that.
You could delay that if you, if you want to go back to and see, get a different number. Otherwise, you could say up to
Okay.
And give yourself flexibility to just, to negotiate downward.
Yeah. And I'm not trying to take a bite here. If it makes more sense to go ahead and let's just be done with it.
And I think that's
Like Jeff said, consider it a mistake and move on. But
We're only off by a can of pop. But when you start looking at the numbers, what else is off? I want to see a pro forma.
And we're, remember, we're the first one to go through this. That, you know, a handful of other towns will be here in the next, you know, six months. So I think precedent could be set here.
And to that point, we have been talking to a couple of the other communities to get, to see where they're at, too. And so, I mean, we're not the only one who received the letter. But I guess I would agree with that if we can move forward with resolution B and then take item one underneath that and do the up to.
It's a motion, not a resolution.
Okay.
You're just confirming the resolution.
Okay.
And then it's a motion and might want to adjust that to up to that amount.
Payment up to. Okay. All right. So we're just taking no action on A?
Correct.
Item B, consider motion to confirm resolution two thousand and sixteen one twelve confirming Oak City's letter of withdrawal from Dart. Motion?
So moved. Second.
Roll call.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Vogel? Yes.
Motion carries.
And here's the lesson for the Cub Scouts. When you make a mistake, it has impact. As evidenced by the last five minutes.
It takes forever to get them correct. Okay. And then consider motion to approve Oak City payment of up to seventy-nine thousand, two hundred and ninety dollars and seventy-two cents to Dart for debt.
For have Dart.
Or have Dart levy taxes. So I think we're saying that we're going to say
Up to.
Up to.
And not paying.
No, to levy property taxes up to seventy-nine thousand, two ninety-seven-two. Yes?
Yes.
Okay. Amy, you good with that?
Yes, I'm, that's fine.
Roll.
Little background. This is two thousand and eighteen. Taxes that will be paid beginning July one, two thousand and nineteen will amount to a hundred and thirty thousand, fifty dollars if Oak City does not leave Dart. If we leave Dart, that tax will be reduced to the seventy-nine, two ninety, according to Dell calculations. And I think their calculations are off. And just to put this in perspective, in two thousand and fourteen, all of fiscal year two thousand and fourteen, Oak City taxpayers paid fifty-two thousand, forty dollars. Just putting that in perspective. Lastly, if there was a publication that came out, or if they were not trying to hide their finances, Dart would have provided each community with the amount of debt every time new debt was secured, instead of doing it with a small member board and then hiding behind the twenty-eighty. I have a whole lot of problems with debt being in our name without our realization.
With that, I'm done.
They got that, but I'll go to Jeff's point. All right. I mean, I think that that's right to exactly what you're saying. Okay. So I would take a motion on the up to seventy-nine, two ninety-seven-two to levy against fiscal year nineteen.
So moved.
Okay.
Roll call, please.
Vogel? Yes. Sarchet?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item four, under Fire Department A, consider motion to approve specifications for a new ambulance to send out fit. Fids due back March first, two thousand and eighteen. You saw chief's memo. Take motion.
So. Second.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Walters?
Yes.
Vogel? Yes. Sarchet?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item B, consider motion to approve final figures and funding source for the new trailer purchased in two thousand and seventeen. So a memo in your package regarding that. Gary, you have anything to add to that?
Very quickly, the, the sale of the old ambulance, the trailer, and some radio equipment came to a total of sixteen thousand, five hundred and thirty-seven dollars. Seventeen thousand, three hundred and four dollars was the new trailer, decals, hitch, adapter, and a radio install. Difference being seven thousand, six hundred and seven dollars and ninety-one cents. That has currently been paid by the city. Each group was figuring that they was going to have to pay one thousand, two hundred and fifty. By confirming these numbers tonight, there is no further money changing hands between departments and or an association with the city. We came in about five hundred dollars less. And the Fire Department Association would not have to spend any of their one thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars.
Questions? Motion?
So the cost to the city is seven hundred and sixty-seven dollars.
Yes.
Well, I like the way they've done this. They've called some of the costs are securing. That's the way I like seeing things done. And I would make a motion to approve that purchase.
Second.
Roll call.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Vogel?
Motion carries. Item five, consider motion to approve the first reading of ordinance two thousand and eighteen one hundred, commending stop and no parking. Gary?
Thank you, Mayor. In front of you is stop and no parking for the Whitetail Ridge area. And specifically, the Hug Drive cul-de-sac. Second in this is a reversal of some no parking on East Southside Drive. A residence in that area suggested that we take a look at this again. All departments that are involved with no parking did review this and felt that there was an area that parking could be allowed along the far end of East Southside Drive in the cul-de-sac. And there's a map in your agenda packet. But roughly speaking, I can send this around if you don't want to look for it. Red would be no parking in those areas that there's no red. Allow park. Some of the issues that we had with allowing parking just did not come to fruition like we thought they would. And with the no parking, there is issues in the area with meetings and other social activities that are causing some issues. And we revisited. And we believe that allowing parking in this area will cause no undue hardship on the city's part.
So I remember when we first put East Southside in, and I think before homes were built down there, that you had some pretty lengthy discussion around this three years, four years ago, maybe-ish. And so now that the homes are built, it's just, you guys took another hard look at it and decided it'd go. Okay. Trace, you good with that?
Sure.
Make a motion to approve ordinance two thousand and eighteen one hundred.
Okay.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Vogel? Yes. Sarchet?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item eight, under reports. You're good. We've already taken care of your stuff. Under reports, just a couple of quick things on my end that I did get the opportunity to go to the last chamber meeting, kind of give a little update state of the city and well-received. And appreciate staff bringing that report together for me at a time. If you guys ever get a chance to go to one of those luncheons, it's always really good, good networking opportunity up there with people. Councilman Sarchet and myself went last night and actually met with the North Polk United Board. Just trying to keep the communication open between that group as well as this side of the table and trying to talk options about future needs and field expansion and current field use and those things. So that was just a good meeting, trying to do those once a year if we can. And Mike, I appreciate the information it provides to me. And that's all I have. Anybody else have anything else to report up here?
I'll just extend congratulations to the eight new members and four promotions at the pending ceremony for the Fire Department on, on Saturday. It was a good deal and a lot of work goes into that. So they've all been in the packet previously, but congratulate all of those, those folks have put in.
Yes, sir.
Just question, quick question. Has anything been done as far as the water hookup fees? Have you guys looked into that at all? We will be bringing that back. We've been working with finance on a variety of different things with budget. And we will be bringing water and sewer increases where they fall here in the near future.
Anything else? Seeing Dan walk in reminded me I did have one other note here. Over this last week, we did lose a longtime Oak City resident, Sue Hyler. Served on the Fire Department clear back in the early, or mid-seventies to all through the eighties. She was actually on the Fire Department with my dad. I've known Sue and she's now is a close friend of mine and actually just a lost to a longtime Oak City resident. My thoughts with their family. Staff, have anything else to report? Yes, sir.
I just want to make everyone aware that part of the K nine fundraising, we've started applying for some community grants through Prairie Meadows and with Walmart Corporation and Target. So those are, that's all public information. So if you see that, I just want to make you guys aware of that. Everybody who comes and asks you a question about it, that's all publicly, publicly up there. Just for extra funding to get things kicked off.
Is everything going like you planned?
It's slow starting up, but yeah, yeah, we got a lot of events planned between now and summer. Fundraising events, good community events. So I'll have more on those as we go. I guess I could pitch one that's got finalized, the March ninth. They want to come to Papa's. He is going to host us over there, Sean Comer is. And we are going to assist the wait staff and solicit tips to go towards the K nine program.
Are you actually going to be serving?
Well, whatever he lets us do. He might not let me after my first order. I think we're going to be clearing tables, getting the services.
Oh.
Got to work our way up.
What are the Scouts doing that now? You guys should go over and just tear the place up. Anybody, yes?
I just wanted to give a short update on our GIS and how it's moving forward in the Public Works Department specifically. Jared Boss Jared Foss with Schneider Associates, uh, got us online with our tree inventory, um, which is where we've been moving to. And our first project while Joe was still employed here was to, uh, update the tree inventory, and he did that. He self-started himself in that project and really took advantage of it. And, um, anyway, he updated that entire tree inventory list, the parks, all that, and, um, the total number of trees that we are in charge of right now is eight hundred and eighty-seven trees. Uh, we do have a few grouping of trees in some timbered areas that we just kind of grouped together, so there's probably more than that, but in our right of ways and stuff, that's what we have to, uh, deal with, so.
Then figure out how many of those can plan.
Eight hundred and eighty-eight.
Yeah, probably, yeah, right.
Anyway, it's moving forward, we're gonna move on to sign inventory next, those type of things, so it's moving forward, is really what I wanted to say.
Anybody else, any of anything else to add, proved all your stuff, so. Perfect.
I'd just like to welcome the Weebloos here and say that I was a Weeblo once myself, ten or twelve years ago.
How many?
Sixty. And kind of give an explain, explanation, everybody up here is elected official except for Mr. Mahanna, he's our city administrator. And we have our city attorney, Amy Beeter, uh, engineer Kathleen Connor, Mike Sholley is, uh, director of Public Works. Jenny is our city clerk, this, our, uh, finance officer, you know, the chief of police, and this is the fire chief back here. And welcome, it's good to see you here.
I was really glad that he went through and did that, it was just fun putting him on the spot and seeing if he could get everybody straight. Yes, sir.
We do have a couple of questions from scouts.
I would love to have a couple of questions directed our way, that was next on my list. Oh, they're all prepared questions.
Okay, so, why do you require builders to build parks in their development but not replant some of the trees they cut down?
Oh, man.
Who, who wants to tackle that one? Yeah, no kidding.
That was Dave, that was for Dave.
That was for Dave, and he's not here. I'll see if I can bite at it real quick, so, um, when a developer, Jared, you want to answer this question? So when a developer comes in and they buy up a chunk of ground, um, they will bring their ideas to us as far as what it is that they want to build up there, and it works through one of our other boards here that meets on, uh, on, once, uh, a month on Mondays, it's called our Planning and Zoning Commission. And that group there will work with the developer to, um, finalize a plan as well as our engineer, there's a lot of time that goes into it before we see it. And so they'll, uh, work through that step, and so we are working right now to come up with a new policy ordinance, uh, as far as replanting trees. Now, a lot of the developments in town that have been built recently were built in some areas that had some old junk trees, nasty trees, that at the end, as these new developments go in and they build new homes and they build new property, um, they will plant some new trees, uh, that we've agreed to, certain variety of trees. But in the end, if you go and look at some areas that were planted back in the eighties, for example, um, it's all grown out now. So, um, we do require some, some replanting, it just depends on the project and, and what exactly is going in up there. Anything, Dan?
I just like, there's an ordinance in the works, we've been working on it for almost a year, I think. And, uh, to, to get the city more involved with what they do with that ground, first of all. To go in and look and see what trees they're tearing down, get the Arbor League involved, the Tree Board, and, uh, require, uh, replantings of some. It's just, we've looked at other cities and how they do it, and we're trying to come up with a fair ordinance to. But I appreciate your concern.
Only two more questions.
Oh, we'll take them. What's that?
What makes your job hard?
When Weeblo show up to a meeting and ask hard questions. What makes our job hard? Uh, I think it's probably trying to find that fine balance of, um, having a growing community and, uh, making people happy who live here as well as the people who want to live here. Um, I think it's trying to do, I think we all are committed to doing what's best for all of our people as much as we can, but sometimes there's tough decisions that we have to make up here, um, that may not always be popular. So, uh, it's, it's trying to really look and do what's best for, for the entire community.
Yeah, I would say the, the tree question is a good example of that, so we struggle with how much right do I have sitting up here to say to someone who, I won't point in any direction, should do, should do anything with what, with land that they own. And, and I should tell them what kind of tree, or what type of tree, or where to plant things when they have the right to, to, they own that land and to use as they see fit. But while also being cognizant of the fact that you're part of the community and, and you want to do what's, what's, you know, best for the, the entire town as, you know, as much as you can come to that conclusion. So, uh, finding the balance between doing what you think is right personally versus, uh, publicly and for as many people as possible.
One more question?
What is your most enjoyable part of your job?
Most enjoyable part of my job? Meeting with Luke Weeblos.
People take his picture.
Yeah, that's what. It's, it's, uh, it's, it's seeing eventually, as you've spent some time up here, or Ron particularly, who's been doing it longer than us, um, as you're able to see the community grow because of decisions that you've made, and, and the hope is, is that the decisions that we make up here, uh, will ultimately make the community better for when you guys are adults and are maybe sitting up here in this position. Um, but, you know, I think that that's the enjoyable thing for me is when you see something, a project that we've started working on way in its infancy, and you see it through and, and, and things start all coming together, I know that's the part that I, that I do really enjoy, knowing that we're making this place a better place in the long run.
I agree with what Mayor Morris has said, it's nice when you get those calls that say, thank you, I like what you've done. I was involved with one just last week that Mr. Sholley helped me out with, and that citizen called me back and said, thank you. He came to some kind of resolution, and those things, and the other things we do is, you know, it's a tough job, but on the other hand, it isn't, because we were elected to represent the people, so if we listen to the people and try to do what the people want, it's really not that hard. It's when you get them fifty-fifty issues. I, I said for years, one of the hardest, hardest decisions we made every year was one to have bigger tonight. Somebody was always upset, no matter what night we picked.
Fix that problem.
Yeah, we fixed that, but, yeah, there's some negatives, but I like to look at the, the positives far more than the negatives. It makes you feel good about your city, like Jason said, and I've seen a lot of improvements. I've lived here since nineteen sixty-eight, and I think there were less than a thousand people here prior. And that's changed quite a bit.
How about any comments from our newest council members on either end here that are sitting so quietly and?
Well, in my previous tenure up here, I really enjoyed voting on issues and then sometime later going to a ribbon cutting because the decisions that we made helped foster growth in the community. Fairway and, uh, Folders Inn, and those types of things in the community that really add value to what we have. But I enjoy coming up here, I enjoy the challenges, I enjoy talking to citizens within our community to see what kind of, uh, issues and concerns they may have, and to see what we can do to, uh, make everyone's lives better here, that's, that's our job. We want to make sure that when you go to work, you're gonna get there because you got good roads, clean streets, you got Fire Department, Police Department that'll keep you safe, and when you come home at night, you know, you got lights on in your street, you know, you're gonna go to a safe neighborhood, and you're gonna enjoy your community. That's why I like being up here.
And I'll say, it's nice to see you here, it's nice to have people come to our meetings, see them in the audience, and show an interest in what we, so thank you.
And on a personal note, I'd like to say that I as well was a Weeblo at one, one time, and it's nice to see, uh, Pac-89 growing again. I know, I, I, so I'm excited to see some youth that are interested in it, and hopefully you guys, uh, continue your tenure with the scouts and get on up in Boy Scouts and pursue that Eagle Scout at some point.
Mel, as the newest member, this is only my second meeting here, um, I'm very new at this, so I can't say a lot of what I do enjoy about my job, but I can tell you the reason that I did run for the city council was I have two kids, they're both younger than you guys, and, you know, I just want this to be a great place for them to grow up, um, when they have families of their own, so come back and visit, we just love Polk City, and I'm excited to be involved in decisions that'll help make this a great place, um, for a long time, so. And I will add that it's great to have you guys here, as I was sitting here, I realized, looking back a long time ago, when I was in, I think, fifth grade, I was student council president, I think, I had to introduce the mayor on Arbor Day. Random thing, but, so, you know, with your tree question, you never know, you might end up up to something, so. So, yeah, that just hit me.
So thank you guys again, Pac-89 for coming, and all you guys are doing for Polk City and Cub Scouts, and now we've come to Ron's favorite part of the evening.
Motion to adjourn.
You got a second? All in favor? Oh, jeez.